Camera, but now we got it going, so we'll start our meeting. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll ask for a moment of silence, you may stand or sit. Thank you. So we're going to start our meeting off this morning with public comment on the agenda items, and after we talk about that, then we'll do non-agenda items. Does anyone have any comment on the agenda? Good morning, Bruce.
Good morning. Am I to understand that we are going to comment on things that we have not heard from the commissioners or anything that you're going to discuss, and then at the end of the meeting, everybody can go home? Is that what you're doing?
Yes. You can read down through them, and we can talk about it before we vote on them.
Who's the "we"?
We can talk about it, you can ask your comments, and then we-
You want the public to walk in here, read through this, and ask questions about something that hasn't happened?
Read it over, and then we will-
I understand. I think that's, at best, obfuscation, at worst, oh, I don't want to use the word cover-up, but-
The agenda is posted online on our website now. We've done that, we've started that this year.
I wasn't elected to this office. The three of you were.
Right.
This should be much more open than, take a look at this, see what you want to see-
It's on the internet, it's on our website. That's very open.
I'm aware of that. People have lives, they come to this meeting, we come to the meeting, and you say, well, the commissioners have decided, we want you to look at the whole thing, ask questions before the commissioners, give the details, and forget about comment, because we're getting that out of the way right away.
We don't really do comment before we take our vote, anyway. We go ahead and we take our vote, but we can make, you can ask a question on it now, if you'd like.
Why would I ask a question of something that you, that the court hasn't discussed?
Because it's right in front of you.
No, I want to hear the conversation back and forth about the details. That's why we come here. Otherwise, you could just sit up there all by yourselves, you don't need us, you don't need the public.
Okay.
The people who, people who, let's say, someone walks in here now, or at 9:00, stands for the pledge, moment of silence, okay, we're going to do this, oh, I haven't read through it, too bad.
Okay, thank you for your comment.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I would actually like to come in now, because I do like the idea of having it online available, even though it's only the Monday before, still get just a chance to read over what you're proposing to bring up, and that way, and I don't know whether it really makes a difference whether we're able to comment before it actually takes place, because by my, what I'm taking from this, is you're not only going to take questions about what we may have looked up and, you know, deciphered between Monday and now, but you're also going to let public comment take place just before your vote during the meeting as well.
Right.
So anybody that didn't get it online is also going to be able to make that comment just before you take that vote.
Right. No, no, we're going to do it all right in the beginning, Colleen. First of all, thank you for your comment in the beginning, that you like it this way, but no, we're going to do everything in the beginning, and then we're going to work down through our motions and get through our business meeting. We try to have everything ready to go on our agenda by Friday, and then Monday, we get it on the internet, and then, it's always changing, it's a working document, so there's like, oh, we need to put this in, oh, this changed, we have to add this, you know, but we do our best to have it nailed down by Monday at 12:00.
See, and that's where I can understand where he's coming from, too, though, is that if it's only going to be the ones that would be able to print it out and view it online, being able to come into the meeting, or they have to come in, you know, at least a half an hour ahead of time in order to read these through, because you're not going to take those comments before your vote, then it does, it is going to leave quite a few people out, because, number one, there's a lot of people that just don't use the internet, there's other people that, they just don't have that opportunity to speak until they're actually, you know, come right in.
I understand. The courthouse opens at 8:30, and the agendas are laying here on the table, and the door is open, and people are welcome to come on in and sit down, and bring your coffee if you want, and sit down and read through it.
Well, we've had several, all of our last, since the first of the year, most of our meetings that we've come into, all the agendas were either a page came in late, or, you know, something was adjusted, so-
That's true.
There are, there are situations where we need to be, you know, allowed to have those questions.
That's true. There is a hiccup every now and then.
Right.
But hopefully, we're into our, what, fourth meeting now, I'm hoping we're getting all these bugs worked out, and we'll get, things will go smoother.
As long as the agenda doesn't change between Monday and now.
Pardon me?
As long as the agenda that you posted on Monday doesn't change between now and then.
Right. Yes, Bill?
Just radical, I'll say something positive, I'm glad to see the recycling centers getting repaid. I remember watching electronics recycling when Alan was down there bouncing all over the place, and I was down the other week when Jen was doing the same thing, and didn't realize how bad it was till you watched somebody on a forklift ride over there, so I'm glad that's getting done.
Thank you. Any other?
Yes, Stacy? On agenda items number seven and eight, purchase of 2020 utility police interceptors, what department are they being purchased for?
That would be for the sheriff.
I was planning to ask about those, too, but on item number nine, we're approving a change, a change order for courtroom displays, I guess my, my question here is with some of these things that are going to use the Act 13 money, this is money that we don't normally have, we're doing upgrades, it looks like upgrades on some things, and kind of like a maintenance-type thing on another, if we're doing these things now, and we run out of that money later, how, how are we adjusting our budget in order to be able to maintain the things that we're going to be purchasing with these Act 13 money?
Because we're-
If we're using them in a maintenance-type wall now, how are we going to do that once that runs out? Because I did also read an article about some of the funding, that it was going to be reduced already from the Act 13 money, so I guess my, my real question is, everything that we're using Act 13 money on now, is that then taken account for? You know, once we went out of that money, how are we going to pay for those things?
It's a really good question, and it's something I worry about, too, all the time. But we're going to use it while we can, these upgrades that we're doing, we're hoping will last for the next 20 to 25 years, and then we'll have to cross that bridge when we get to it, and if we have to, we would have to raise taxes, because the money won't always be there, but that's why we're trying to get as much done now as we can while we have those funds to use.
Number 12, if you could just, the technology assessment design professional services for Department of Public Safety, if you could just explain that a little bit, of what, what that's going to do?
This is for the new 911 building, and MCM will be, will be looking that over, they'll kind of be, like with the wiring and the technology part of it, they've done work for us in the past, and that's what we are contracting them to do.
And are we any closer on breaking ground?
Well, we got some more blueprints this week, would you like to speak to that, Fisher?
All the civil engineering work has been done, DEP permits for the septic system has been applied for, has been reviewed, we should be receiving that any day. The, the amendment to the HOP has been submitted, we need to increase the volume for the HOP, so we're hoping to get that turned around in the next couple of weeks. The documents have been submitted to the planning commission for land use, as well as to the conservation district for their approval, so all those have been done, final drawing should be done within 30 days, and then it should go out to bid.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Do you have any more comments?
One more. I have, I noticed, again, there was an additional iteming here, and I'm not sure which one it's on, but it was for child services, again, and I know last week, I think two weeks ago it was, there was two other items in there for child services, and I guess, I just don't understand, if we have two that we passed last, at the last meeting, and we're passing another for this meeting, maybe there could be a little bit more explanation on what we're paying for? I mean, we're talking about three different things that we're, have considerable amount of money going out for children and youth services, with very little explanations to, you know, why there's three different things, or continuous throughout the year that we're, you know, approving certain budgets for?
Well, you have to remember, Colleen, these don't get used every day or every week, I mean, they have to have different companies that they can work with for children that have different needs, so it's not like something that we're using every month, it's whenever they need to place a child that's in danger or in harm or needs help.
No, and then there's another thing, because I sat in on one of the children and youth service things a couple of years back, and there was an issue as far as, different parents had gotten together for children that, that were in need, and most of them had to travel quite far in Wilkes-Barre, and even farther in some cases, and they were talking then about trying to get some of those services back closer to home, and I know with one of your colleagues that you made, you know, the 4-H members and having such good help here in, in the county, I guess a question, why we're paying so many of these outlining services that are so far away from home, if it's for children and youth, and if we have so many good people here in Pennsylvania, or in Susquehanna County, why can't we keep some of those services closer to home?
Well, we do have a lot of people here in the county, but these are counseling, these are homes where they live, you know, they're facilities, and we don't have those kind of facilities here in this county, so we have to do the best we can by outsourcing, and I'm sure they try to get children as close to Susquehanna County as they can, but we have to go where they're available. But, thank you for your comments. Stacy?
I'm just going to go with, one more on number 13, just a, a comment on that, the, just because it kind of brings up elections, and we've been talking about that a lot lately. The votespa.com website has got webpages set up for every county in the state, with videos, links, people can see exactly how to, information about the machines, information about the entire process, and people can go to that, so I would advise that.
Yes, they're covering it very well, aren't they?
They are, they-
Yes, they are. Thank you for your comment on that.
It's very thorough.
It's also on our webpage, and we've also pushed it out on our Facebook pages, too.
And like we said to you in the last meeting, we're going to have at Ag Day on March the 6th, we're going to have a machine and a table set up, our election ladies will be here, and we'll have a machine there, also at the Women's Empowerment Summit on March 28th, we're going to have a table there, and then again, at the libraries, and at the fair this year, we'll have our machines, so we're pushing it out the best we can to educate people. Yes, Colleen?
That was, I almost forgot about it, I did notice in there, you had $25 for the Women's Empowerment for that election, so is there going to be a booth there that they-
They're going to have a table, yes, that's the fee, the vendor fee, and Macy and Melissa will be there manning the table with the machine and with information.
Okay, well, that's what I, I guess I questioned the amount there, too, I'm thinking that it was, my understanding is that it's more than that, because it's $25 per person to go, it's another, it's another charge for the vendor table, and then, on top of that, you need to take a basket and goodies, goodies to put in the goodie bag, so my estimate, estimation to go to that event would have been over $100.
Well, I believe that Macy set it up with the founders of that program, so maybe that's the deal that she has made with them, maybe they're given the discount because we're the county and we're trying to educate people, but that's actual, that's the price. Richard?
I, I don't have a comment on one of these items, but it's just a general question, is this an appropriate time to-
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Nothing to do with that, but voting, 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 and just something to think about, could we do a little bit more aggressive job in, when people visit our courthouse to conduct other business in different places, the register of wills, or the paternity, or, you know, et cetera, maybe to have just a little, small, little counter display, drawing their attention to the new voting rigs, and while you're here visiting our courthouse, why don't you stop in and visit with us? You know, just a way, because they're already here conducting business with us as citizens, and just a reminder, in those public areas where we touch the public, where they're coming in to conduct business, dog license, whatever, it's just to remind them, maybe to visit voter registration while they're here, and pick up one of the pamphlets that are now currently being handed out, just another way of helping sell the, the visibility that things are going to be changing, and maybe lighten the load the day of.
Right. It's a great idea, Richard.
Just, just the public areas, you know, where they're, wherever they're touching us, you know?
Thank you.
That's all.
We'll look into that, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay? Any other questions or comments? We good?
Motion to close public comment.
I'll second that motion. Motion by Commissioner Hall to close the public comment at 9:17, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve item two.
I will second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the minutes of the February 12, 2020 Commissioners' Meeting, seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number three.
Motion to approve item three.
I will second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to amend the minutes of February 12, Commissioners' Meeting with the following changes, seconded by Commissioner Herschel, motion 19 was effective date was resignation was February 16, and motion 20, the effective date was transfer February 16. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve four.
I will second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to recess Commissioners' Meeting, open salary board, seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve item one.
I will second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to approve minutes of February 12, salary board meeting, seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor?
Aye.
I will abstain.
You were not here, right?
I was not here.
Okay, I'm staying. Jason? Number two.
Motion to approve item two.
I will second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to create a union-eligible position of vehicle equipment preservation and minor bodywork maintenance part-time, $13 per hour, less than 1,000 hours per year, no benefits, effective February 26, per the recommendation of Jim Hawley, Director of Public Facilities. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve item three.
I will second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to create the full-time, union-eligible position of temporary recycling center secretary, 11:48 per hour, no benefits, expires June 30, 2020, per the recommendation of Jennifer Hibbard, Recycling Coordinator, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve four.
I will second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to create a full-time, non-union position of Director of Public Safety Operations, 911 Coordinator, $55,000 per year, effective February 24, 2020, with a six-month probationary period and benefits according to the county policy manual and government-mandated requirements, per the recommendation of Rebecca Hubbard, Chief Clerk, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve five.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to change the job title of Director of Public Safety, 911 Coordinator, to the Director of Public Safety and Compliance Administrator, per the recommendation of Rebecca Hubbard, Chief Clerk, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve six.
I will second that motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hall to create a full-time, non-union position of Public Safety GIS and Systems Database Analyst, at $48,000 per year, paid with grant funding, effective February 26, 2020, with a six-month probationary period and benefits according to residual bargaining unit in the county policy manual, per the recommendation of Bruce Butler, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor?
Can I just confirm one thing?
Sure.
That grant funding will be renewable each year while this position is available?
It will be looked at each year, if it's renewable, the position will stay.
Okay.
If it's not renewed, then the position goes.
Okay, thank you.
Good question, thank you. Number seven? Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number seven?
Motion to approve seven.
I will second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to create a full-time, union-eligible position of 911 Operations Officer, Telecommunicator, $18 per hour, effective February 26, with a six-month probation period and benefits according to the residual bargaining unit in the county policy manual, per the recommendation of Brad Ellsworth, Director of Public Safety Operations, 911 Coordinator, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor?
Aye.
Number eight?
Motion to approve eight.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hall to create the temporary, full-time, non-union position of Deputy Director of Training and Quality Assurance, effective February 26, 2020, through May 1, 2020, $46,818 per year, with benefits according to the county policy manual and government-mandated requirements, per the recommendation of Brad Ellsworth. All in favor?
Hold it. Can I ask a question?
We did the questions in the beginning.
I didn't get to read everything.
Not on salary board.
All right, what is your question?
My question is, what is the director of, what is this agency, this Director of Training and, what is the quality assurance deal, and why is it so expensive for a two-month deal? What, what is it? Explain it, please.
Two-month deal.
For the two months deal creates a temporary full-time, non-union position of Deputy Director of Training and Quality Assurance, if I just mind for this. Is this where we're, are we overlapping here? Do you want to explain that? We're overlapping, Brad?
This, no, this isn't Brad, this is Nancy's position.
Nancy's position, okay, because she's resigning.
We have, we have an employee that, that has, is resigning and going into another field, what we're doing is creating a temporary position for her to move her into-
Yep.
-so that she can continue to work until her end date, which is, I believe, is May 1, but allows us now to take and open her position up, so we can hire somebody in, so there can be some cross-training. $46,000 is a yearly salary, it's not a monthly salary, so it's, it's prorated at her normal salary rate, it's just to get somebody else in, so that person can get up and get trained, and, and get into that position before that person leaves.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Alan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number nine?
Motion to approve nine.
I will second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to eliminate the hourly, non-union position of Senior IT Technician, effective on February 27, 2020, per the recommendation of Stephen Janowski, Director of IT, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number 10?
Motion to approve 10.
I will second that.
A motion by Commissioner Hall to create the hourly, non-union position of IT Technician, $15.23 per hour, 40 hours per week, effective February 27, 2020, with a six-month probationary period and benefits according to the county policy manual and government-mandated requirements, per the recommendation of Stephen Janowski, Director of IT, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number 11?
Motion to approve 11.
I will second that.
A motion by Commissioner Hall to create the temporary, full-time, non-union position of Correction Sergeant, Shift Commander, $18 per hour, at least 40 hours per week, with benefits according to the county policy manual and government-mandated requirements, effective February 26, 2020, through April 1, 2020, per the recommendation of Warden Mark Shell, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any public comments on the salary board?
Motion to close salary board.
I'll second that motion.
Motion at 9:25, salary board is closed. Thank you, everyone.
Motion to approve item five.
I'll second that motion.
A motion by Commissioner Hall, seconded by Commissioner Herschel, to pay the bills. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve item six.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and/or approve the following seminar requests and/or payment for seminar requests, as follows, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve item seven.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the purchase of a 2020 utility police interceptor from New Holland Auto, with CoStar's pricing, $42,065.68, to be paid with funds from Act 13, seconded by Commissioner Herschel, and that is for the Sheriff's Department. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve eight.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the purchase of the 2020 police responder Ford F-150 from New Holland Auto, with CoStar's pricing of $46,501, to be paid with funds from Act 13, seconded by Commissioner Herschel, again, this is for the Sheriff's Department. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve nine.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to approve a change order in the amount of $7,157,000, $1,000, $7,157 for automated lifestyles for displays and monitors in the courtroom, paid with Act 13 money, per the recommendation of President Judge Jason Lay, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve 10.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to enter into a purchase of service agreement with Families United Network of Muncie, Pennsylvania, for child welfare services, Schedule F, effective July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2020, per the recommendation of Michelle Graziano, Director of Children and Youth, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve 11.
Motion by Commissioner-
I'll, I'll second that.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to enter into purchase service agreement with United Charity, with United Children's Homes, West Hazelton, for child welfare services, at the per game rate, $155, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number 12?
Motion to approve 12.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to approve entering into a contract with MCM Consulting Group, State College PA, for technology assessment and design and professional services for the Department of Public Safety, for a maximum cost of $177,660.50 for one year, paid partially from PMA 911 funding, effective February 26, 2020, per the recommendation of Bruce Butler, Director of Public Safety, and is seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve 13.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to enter into a service agreement with the Election IQ LLCs from Stowe, Ohio, for maintenance, testing, and support of election equipment, total annual cost $35,500 for this election year, per the recommendation of Macy Rudock, Director of Elections and Voter Registration, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve 14.
I will second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to appoint the following to the local emergency planning committee for the years 2020 to 2021, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve 15.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to award following review of the engineer and the solicitor, the recycling pavement project bid to broom Batominus Vestal for $182,650, paid with 902 grant funding, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve 16.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to accept the resignation of Nicole Boukhan from the position of Part-Time Corrections Officer, effective February 12, per Warden Mark Shell, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number 17?
Motion to approve 17.
I will second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to accept the transfer of Ayana Brown from the position from the position of Correction Sergeant, Shift Commander, to the temporary position of Correction Sergeant, Shift Commander, effective February 26th, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve 18.
I will second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and approve the hiring of Faith Kawakowski... Hopefully I said that correctly. Montrose, to the open, union-eligible position of Part-Time Corrections Officer, $14.96 per hour, varied hours, per the recommendation of Warden Mark Shell, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion approved 19.
I will second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and approve the hiring of Jonathan Zelowitz Brackney to the open, union-eligible position of Part-Time Corrections Officer, $14.96 per hour, varied hours, effective February 25th, recommendation of Mark, Warden Mark Shell, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved 20.
I will second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and approve the transfer of Bruce Butler from the position of Director of Public Safety, 911 Coordinator, to the full-time, non-union position of Director of Public Safety and Compliance Administrator, effective February 24th, 2020, per the recommendation of Rebecca Hubbard, Chief Clerk, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved 21.
I'll second that.
A motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and approve the transfer of Brad Ellsworth from the position of Deputy Director of Public Safety, 911 Operations and Systems Manager, to the full-time, non-union position of Director of Public Safety Operations, 911 Coordinator, $55,000 per year, effective February 24th, 2020, with a six-month probationary period and benefits according to the county policy, recommendation of Rebecca Hubbard, Chief Clerk, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved 22.
I will second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to accept with regret the resignation of Nancy Tater from the position of Deputy Director of Public Safety, 911 Training and Quality Assurance Supervisor, effective May 1st, 2020, per the recommendation of Brad Ellsworth, Director of Public Safety Operations, 911 Coordinator, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion approved 23.
I will second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the transfer of Nancy Tater, 911, to the temporary position of Deputy Director of Public Safety Training and Quality Assurance, effective February 26th through May 1st, per the recommendation of Brad Ellsworth, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved 24.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner to approve the hiring of Jacqueline Enzulis Montrose to the open, full-time, union-eligible position of Telemark, Telecommunicator 1, $15.08 per hour, 40 hours per week, effective March 5th, 2020, with a six-month probationary period and benefits according to residual bargaining unit contract in the county policy, under the recommendation of Bruce Butler, Director of Public Safety, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved 25.
I will second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the transfer of Michael Kog from the full-time position of Senior IT Technician to the open, full-time, non-union position of IT System Administrator, $19.23 per hour, 40 hours per week, effective February 27th, 2020, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved item 26.
I will second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hall to advertise for public bid on Minnesota bid the following vehicle, a 2014 Ford Taurus, with mileage of 104,557 miles, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved 27.
I will second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hall to approve a proclamation, 2020-02, proclaiming March 2020 as Colon Cancer Awareness Month in Susquehanna County, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number 28.
Make a motion to approve item 28.
I will second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hall to approve proclamation, 2020-03, proclaiming March as Census Participation Month, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have 29. Make a motion to approve item 29, where the winning bid going to Larry Esposito, and the winning bid amount is $10,277.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion to approve...
It was two names.
Yeah, well, there is, I gotta get the right one. Because there's two different ones. Two different people.
The challengers are the Venn.
Well, I know which ones are. There's two different ones with two different names. So I gotta get the right Venn for the right one. So item 30, make a motion to approve the winning bid to Bodmus Bodmus, and winning bid of $4,000.
Excuse me? In the past, didn't you open envelopes?
Under your Minnesota bid, we don't have to do that.
Excuse me?
Minnesota bid, you don't have to do it. It's on the internet. We used to receive them sealed in an envelope, but now it's on the internet. So you just take it off of there. There's nothing to open.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I will second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion on item 31, to award the bid for the 2015 challenger to... And this one is Ladri Quadri for $4,000.
I'll second that.
I have a motion from Commissioner Hall to accept this bid, seconded by Commissioner Herschel, for $4,000 on the 2015 Ford Challenger. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I have a motion, I have a motion to close the Commissioners Meeting.
I'd like to make a couple announcements before we close.
Oh, okay.
Just a few that we need to do. First of all, actually, two or three. First of all, after the last meeting, I want to let everybody know that we have been in negotiations with the, with the union that represents the employees.